Good morning. It's 9 o'clock. Welcome to the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors meeting, Monday, October 11th, 2021. We are meeting both in the board chambers on the fourth floor of the courthouse and also via Zoom. So welcome those who are also with us virtually. We begin our agenda with opportunity for public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters which are on the agenda. However, if you are here for a meeting that is open, that there will be a public hearing, typically zoning matters, we'd ask that you wait until we open those public hearings and not take the opportunity at this time to approach the podium. If you're here about things that are not a public hearing, you may go to the podium, state your name and home address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Those who are with us virtually, you would raise your hand on the bottom of your bar. You'll see the reactions, and there you may raise your hand if you wish to address the board. So at this time, if anyone wants to address, move to the podium, and we'll wait a minute to see if anyone uses their raise hand function. You may also enter a comment in chat indicating you wish to meet or visit. Don't have anyone approaching the podium, and no one indicating that either on in our virtual world. So we'll move on to the agenda. The first matter is a proclamation. I know we have a representative St. Mark's here with us. We'll ask you just to come to the podium, and I will propose, I'll read the proposed proclamation. Keeping the lights on after school, whereas the citizens of Dubuque County stand firmly committed to quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, physical, and academic skills. Support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends. Build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth families and adults. Engage students, families, schools, and partner, community partners in advancing the welfare of their children. Whereas during COVID-19 pandemic, after-school programs have risen to the moment to support youth in our critical supports, to help youth recover from this challenging time, and address their academic, social, and emotional needs. After-school programs provide engaging, hands-on learning and opportunities to connect with caring adults and peers. During the pandemic, programs have innovated to provide remote learning support, virtual programming, care for children of essential workers, meal support, wellness check-ins, and more. Today, programs are supporting young people and families as they navigate their return to school, and will continue to innovate to meet ever-changing needs. Whereas St. Mark Youth Enrichment has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. Whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs held this year on October 28th promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. Whereas more than 28 million children in the United States have parents who work outside the home, and 15.1 million children have no place to go after school. Whereas many after-school programs across the country closed and are facing short-term funding shortfalls so severe they're being forced to close their doors and turn off their lights. Whereas the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities that will help close the achievement gap and prepare young people to compete in the global economy. Now therefore, the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors, we hereby proclaim October 28th, 2021, as Lights On After School Day in Dubuque County, Iowa, and ask all citizens to enthusiastically endorse Lights On After School and commit our community to engage in innovative after-school programs and activities that ensure the lights stay on and the doors remain open for all children after school. We have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the proclamation?
And I will second that.
Motion is second to approve the proclamation, keeping the lights on after school. All in favor vote yes.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Good morning. My name is Beth Magori, and I am the Director of Donor Relations at St. Mark Youth Enrichment. It is always an honor to come and speak to the county. The work of rural after-school programs is really important to us at St. Mark, and we know you guys support us within the county. These kids came back to school lost and a little bit unprepared to come back, and we have worked so hard to give them a safe, caring, and loving environment, teaching them how to stand in line again, teaching them how to be kind. And this year has been one of those beautiful moments of watching these kids come back. The resiliency of children is huge, and the support of after-school programming is so greatly needed, especially in our rural communities. And we are so thankful for every bit of support that the county has ever given us, and as we continue to take care of the kids in Piafsted and Dyersville especially right now, they're thankful for everything that you do for them. They are working so hard on their social skills, and they don't even know that they're working hard. And they don't know that the work that they're doing is helping their moms and dads go to work every day. They don't know that they're, them being there is this safe space for moms and dads to know that I can stay at work until 5:30 and get my work done, that I can be, that moms and dads can feel safe and not have to worry where their kids are in the afternoon, and they can be better employees in service of our community. So with that, thank you so much to the community, to the county for supporting us once again.
Right.
As we keep our lights on.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
In this, I read about the social and emotional learning skills, and I know that you pioneered that
Yes.
in this community and in the county at a time when that was just kind of scramble pot, right? Can you tell us a little bit about what you lead? What is that? What does it mean?
You know, social-emotional learning is, when I talk about it in lay terms, in adult terms, we talk about it as emotional intelligence. In our workplace, that's what we call it. In our school place, we call it social-emotional learning. In real terms, it's teaching kids how to be good kids, teaching them how to be good citizens and see themselves outside of the world. When I think of what I want to work with and the people that I want to work next to, I want to work next to someone who can control themselves and understand how to be angry in a safe way. I want to know that when there is discourse, we can have a real conversation because people have learned how to have conversations about being, to disagree. And we've been doing that for over 10 years in this community, is teaching kids how to be better kids, because we know when they can communicate their emotions, when they can understand that there are times that I'm going to be angry and learn how to be angry. Yesterday was World Mental Health Day, and the ability to understand that we have some control over all of the things inside of us, but we have to have a safe place to learn how to say it. And we're training kids how to do that. And to me, that becomes preventative work. We want kids to feel safe so that they can trust their adults, that they can trust adult people, so when they see something, they say something. When they can, I'll never forget the day that we have, in some of our programs, we have leisure services as well as St. Mark Kids in the Same Room. I had this little guy who struggled so much to regulate himself. And one day, he saw a kid over in leisure services having a really, really tough day. He picked up the Safe Space bucket and brought it over to them and showed them how to use it. That's what we want to teach kids to do every day.
Thank you. Given, you need to have a photo for your Facebook page?
Of course.
Always.
Come on.
Next on the agenda is the minutes of the meetings of October 4th and also October 7th, when we did the canvas of the primary votes for the city of Dubuque.
And make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
And I will second that.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Onto consent items. The first item, we have first quarter revenue reports from the auditor, also from the recorder, and from the sheriff. Do you wish to take those as one consent item?
I'll make a motion to approve the quarterly reports.
I will second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Our next item is a Class LC liquor license for Life's a Feast, which is apparently going to be at the airport, and also WCN, the wine permit for Bishop's Vineyard and Winery.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquor licenses for Life's a Feast and for Bishop's Vineyard and Winery.
I will second that.
Motion is second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. We do not have any procurement procedures today, so we'll move on to our public hearings. The first notice in our packet is the actual proof of publication of the notice of public hearing to say we want to make a motion to approve that.
I approve the motion of publication, or the proof of publication for the public hearing.
I will second that.
Motion is second to approve proof of publication. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We now enter into the portion of our meeting where we have public hearings. The first public hearing, and we would invite, Angie, will you be leading us through these? Oh, Tammy's with us, right? First public hearing is for zoning case ZC 09-18-21, River City Stone Company and Robert Miller, A1 agricultural request to move to M1 light industrial. So Tammy, in the virtual world, we'll have you give us the context and background, please.
Okay, thank you. The applicant's request is to rezone from A1 agricultural to M1 light industrial, 10 acres, to allow for the expansion of storage area for their existing business, Dubuque Hardwoods. This property is located 0.85 miles south of the city of Dubuque along Old Massey Road and is legally described as Lot 1 of Stone Quarry Subdivision, Section 8, T88 North, R3E, Musalem Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by River City Stone Company. Zoning in the area includes A1 agricultural to the north, the south, the east, and the west, R1 rural residential to the south and southeast, R2 single-family residential to the south, the southeast, and the west, B1 business to the south, and M1 light industrial to the northeast. The R1 rural residential to the south on zoning case number 9,007 of 75 was to allow for a single-family home. The R1 rural residential to the southeast on zoning case number 020800 was to allow for the construction of a single-family home. The R2 single-family residential to the southeast on zoning case number 0205 of 94 was to allow four acres to be rezoned for a single-family homes. The R2 single-family residential to the southeast on zoning case number 1033 of 02 was to allow 1.25 acres to be rezoned to allow for a single-family home. The B1 business to the south on zoning case number 1024 of 98 was to allow 4.93 acres to be rezoned for the purpose of a landscape nursery, snow removal business, which included some retail sale of landscaping and nursery-related materials. The M1 light industrial to the northeast on zoning case number 1240 of 02 was to allow 12 acres to be rezoned for the operation of a sawmill and veneering log processing facility. The M1 light industrial to the northeast on zoning case number 0105 of 03 was to allow 10 acres to be rezoned for the operation of a sawmill and a veneer logging processing facility as well. And the M1 light industrial to the northeast on zoning case number 0518 of 03 was to allow for 3.5 acres to be rezoned for the storage of logs used as a sawmill operation. There were no previous rezoning cases attached to this property, and there are no special use permits attached to this property. Nine rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners, and the city of Dubuque was notified. Comprehensive Plan Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 135, Objective 5.4, and Chapter 12 Land Use, Page 179, Objective 5.1, and Chapter 7 Economic Development, Page 105, Objective 3.2, and 3.4 may apply to this case. Do you have, so what they're doing here is they're going in and trying to expand their area. They were trying to purchase, Sitco is trying to purchase from River City 10 acres and have it rezoned so they can use it again as a staging area for logs. And if anybody has any questions for me.
Tammy, you're indicating that this is, River City Stone is requesting, but it's prior to the sale of the property?
This is, this is a request that Robert Miller is rezoning, purchasing from River City Stone, yes. So it's River City Stone and Robert Miller, which is Sitco Logging. And I will let, I will let you know that I know that you see in your packet, we did have a Tim and Shannon Haines who had originally stated that they were against the case in our public hearing for the zoning board. They have since called on the 27th of September, and they have spoken with Dave Miller, and they have retracted that statement. They say they're now in favor of this case.
And their concerns at the zoning board were what, Tammy?
Their concerns at the zoning board at that time that there was going to be noise problems, if you'll let me look at my notes quick here. They were living south of the quarry. They had been out there a couple of years. They said it was noisier, and that was a source of frustration. They felt that they were worried that this was going to, operation was going to devalue their property, but they must have spoken, they, well, they called and said they had spoken with Mr. Miller, and that he has put their mind to ease, that they're no longer not in favor of it. They're in favor of it now.
Someone wish to enter a motion opening this for public hearing?
I would make a motion to open the public hearing.
I will second that.
Motion is second to open the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in public hearing, open to the public to participate. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak about this zoning matter, that you can go to the podium. Do we have anyone virtually? Is, do we have Dave Schneider, anyone with us?
Yes, Anne, this is Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying.
Good morning.
Can you hear me, Anne?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Surveying, 906 First Street North, Farley, Iowa. Been working with River City Stone and Dubuque Hardwoods, kind of started the process with Bob Miller, and also working with his son Dave, who is pretty much operating the, the business down there in the bottom of the quarry on the day-to-day basis. And Dave is with us on Zoom as well, if we have any questions for the owner specifically. But basically, this was kind of generated from a call that I received from Bob where they were looking to acquire some additional ground from River City Stone to basically store their supplies that they use down in the bottom of the quarry because they were running out of room during their, kind of their off-seasons when stuff was not moving as, as fast. So basically, this is to allow them to grow and continue expanding what they started in the bottom of the quarry back when they were moved out of the downtown Dubuque area during the expansion of the riverfront area. And so, yeah, just trying to continue operations without having to drive materials all the way across town or to another site further away. I guess if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or if you have any questions for Dave, he is listening in as well.
I, I do have a question for you. This does not relate to any expansion of quarry business, correct?
No, the quarry is basically what they had purchased to run their logging, kind of a, a series of logging operations that kind of feed off each other down there. There's three separate entities that own or, and operate property in the bottom of that quarry, and just kind of with the, because of the way they're confined by the, the walls of the quarry for their, their main operations, they're looking to buy some additional storage area for storage outside of that. There was one expansion into this River City property in the past, and this would be like the second expansion to accommodate that storage need.
Dave, this is Supervisor Putoff. Just a question. I'm not sure if you can answer it. Obviously, on the plat, there are, there's a lot of ground covered with timber in this area, in that 10 acres?
Uh, yes.
Are they figuring, are they figuring on clearcutting all that, or what is, what's the?
Basically, the area that's included within the 10 acres, yes, they would, they would clear that as part of this project, but the, the portion to the north and east of this 10 acres, as you look at the aerial photographs, that, that has no intention of being dealt with during this expansion.
Okay, that is, I'm familiar with that area, and that's pretty hilly. Is there plans in place for water runoff management?
I guess not as part of, not as part of the purchase, no. If there's, you know, a site planning issue or something like that, in my mind, that may come into place there. That may be a question for Tammy.
I would, go ahead, Tammy, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Harley. We haven't, we haven't put in any kind of erosion control numbers or measure, measures or anything at this point, because we haven't even really been able to, to move forward with them and them asking us any questions about that at this point. So there's been no conversation about any erosion control.
Okay.
And why is that, Tammy?
Because they haven't even, you know, we haven't even gotten it rezoned, and there's been no conversation about what they were going to do. We did not know, I did not know until this moment that there was talk about clearing that property off.
So that wasn't brought to the zoning board either?
No, we have, we have not talked about that. We have not talked about the removal of the trees and, and what was going to be happening there.
If, again, Dave Schneider, if they, if they get into clearing this, they, and moving more than one acre of material out there, they're going to get into the standard DNR NPDS permit for construction, erosion control on a construction site, even if they don't get into a, a process where they're, you know, doing improvements or buildings up there and, and get into a site plan process, there's still just the, the, um, physical process of disturbing more than one acre throws them into that DNR NPDS permit that's required.
I would, I would confirm that with Dave. That would be correct.
Okay, that was all I had. Thank you, Tammy.
Can I just ask a follow-up? Is that one acre at this time, or one acre out of the 10?
Basically, EPA mandate is on any construction site, if they go in to start disturbing more than one acre, one acre or more, they've got to file an NPDS permit with the DNR and illustrate their erosion control measures to maintain or to avoid runoff from that construction site.
And if, and if I may, supervisors, that's something that we work with landowners on, and we help take those applications and actually now through Eric Schmuckel's office.
That's what I was going to bring up, Tammy. I'd like to see Eric involved in that. If they do a bunch of construction or moving dirt around, that it's done properly, that we don't end up with issues down the road because of erosion or washing all roads.
And that, and that Supervisor Putoff, that is what, that is what would be required of them.
Thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Are there members of the public who would like to speak?
I have a question.
Sure.
Whenever you're ready. Um, Dave Schneider and/or anyone from River City Stone, do you know generally how many acres River City Stone owns in that area? And it's not probably critical that we give an exact number, but as I look at the aerial map and the other map, it's a lot. And so there is a lot of property that's owned in that area by River City Stone, Matt's Construction, and a lot of it is in A1, it's in agricultural, which generally speaking, Tammy, you can correct me or kind of add comment, we have a lot less probably oversight and, uh, regulation, for lack of a better word, on, on agricultural ground compared to other areas that are zoned. Is that, is that correct?
That, that's correct. When it comes to this, this piece, particular piece is all zoned A1, and if, for example, the owners of this property currently wanted to expand their quarry here, the quarry would cause as to have a special use permit, so it would go to the Board of Adjustment for a request expansion for that. So otherwise, if they came in here and they were doing any kind of field work or any kind of forestry work, that would be under agricultural, and we would not have zoning rules that would control that.
Thank you. Thank you. That was kind of my, my, my point is that you, the property owners already have the ability to, to remove trees and to disturb the land under agricultural use, which there's probably something going on right now. And so I see this as a very small piece related to expansion of their business. And while I'd love everyone to just grow trees and just let the earth be wonderful, I realize that we have to build homes, and we've got to build decks, and we, we need the lumber supply, and we need the rock supply as well to do, to do that. So I'm, I'm comfortable generally with what we've been presented as far as a footprint related to the expansion, but I am open, open and interested in hearing other comments that the public would have at this point.
Are there members of the public here in the boardroom who would like to speak on this matter? In the virtual world, I believe I saw Attorney Warner Helmer is present.
Yes, good morning, members of the board. I'm Warner Helmer. I'm the attorney for the Thomas Buddy Family Trust. The trustee is Thomas Buddy. My address is 137 First Avenue East, Dyersville, Iowa, and the, Mr. Buddy's address is 7258 Old Davenport Road, Lamont. He has asked me to lodge an objection to the rezoning of agricultural land for the following grounds. I realize my time is limited here. He's concerned about the additional loss of, loss of agricultural land that's happening around the area. Mostly, he's concerned, you know, the fact that there recently has been a purchase for an industrial park. He's also concerned about the size that's being requested. He's concerned about the fact that no studies have been made for runoff or any environmental concerns such as soil erosion. Also, the noise, I think the neighbors previously complained about the noise, but for reasons known to themselves, they withdrawn their objection. And he's also concerned about the very heavy traffic on Old Davenport Road, I'm sorry, Old Highway, or the Old Massey Road that's going to take place. Mostly, Dubuque Hardwoods is asking for a place to store its wood products and to expand their business. Of course, the question is, is that size of acreage really needed? And mostly, if the board is inclined to grant this request, I'd just like to remind the board, there, looks like they're asking for straight zoning to M1. Now, I think you're all aware that M1 is an industrial district, and there are about 20 permissible uses for that property. So we don't know what's going to happen if a part or partial that gets sold. Industrial M1 property is obviously going to be worth a lot more than agricultural property, and that's a concern. If the board does feel inclined to grant this zoning request, we would ask that the board consider a conditional zoning request for the specific purpose for which the property, which is to be rezoned was requested. I have nothing further. Thank you very much for your time. I much appreciate it.
Attorney Helmer, Anne McDonough, what is your, what conditional zoning do you want on this? What, what's your suggestion?
Perhaps we can limit it to the, just the, the, you know, storing of wood products and pre-expansion of the sawmill operations. It's not quite clear, looking over the minutes. It's my understanding, it's basically used for a place to store the wood products. We don't want to be in a position from now down the road, when all of a sudden, you've got an M1 industrial zoning that permits anything. You could store cranes on it, heavy equipment, you know, large farm machinery, you know, there are 20 different variants here that would ultimately affect that entire area.
Thank you. Tammy, was there any discussion about that?
I'm looking through my minutes as well, and we always usually have discussion on that, and I have to be quite honest with you, Anne. I'm not recalling or seeing in the minutes where they discussed that, but I do know that, again, I know that Mr. Miller is present on here and as well as Mr. Schneider, and I don't believe that they would be opposed to any to any conditions being placed on this. And again, Mr. Schneider, if you want to speak up or Mr. Miller?
Tammy, I can just, I guess, yeah, the, we were required to do with the M1 because that's what the quarry itself, where they did their operations were, was, was zoned back when they were moved out here out of downtown area. And I guess Dave can answer whether they were M1 downtown before they got moved out of the riverfront area. But I guess, you know, it's, it's clearly an industrial use and, and the condition on, I guess Dave will have to speak to that, is he's willing to, you know, limit it to a specific, I mean, they're, the whole purpose of this is to buy it for storing their wood products, either stuff that they need to process or stuff that has been processed to allow them room to continue operating down in the bottom of that quarry because three businesses do exist down in, in that area and they're obviously, they're, they've been growing, so they need to accommodate themselves.
Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak?
I'm Catherine Caitlin and I would wish to speak.
Go ahead.
I echo the Buddy's objections to this, and I sit on the zoning board, so we, we did discuss this a bit. What I'm concerned about in addition is that this backs up to Mines of Spain. Mines of Spain is a beautiful, it's a beautiful area, and I feel like this is getting very, very close to that beautiful area. So on top of the noise, on top of the fact that I'm, I'm just wondering, like, 10 acres to store hardwood seems like a lot. I also believe that we should put a restriction on the use so that doesn't turn into whatever they want to use it for, for an M1. So I objected to it at the zoning board meeting and, and I objected to it again today.
I noted that the zoning board decision was 5-2, which is unusual.
Yes, I would say that, to be honest, most of the time, we're in, there'd be one against, which is usually me, or we're, we all agree. So this time there were two of us that did not agree with this. If I can add one more thing, this is going from an ag, which was the existing footprint mostly, to an M1, and it's 10 acres. So I don't think it's just an expansion. There's a change in the business model happening here. I'm not sure what that is, but that causes concern for me as well. So I'll just add that and then I'll stop. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Dave, Dave Miller, can you, this is Dave Schneider, can you kind of just respond to the, you know, what your intents are or, you know, obviously, okay, does it make sense to go five acres if they're going to be back in here in three years asking for another five, you know, and here, and do the same battle again? It, I guess, you know, can you maybe just respond to that a little bit?
Yeah, no problem. Good morning, Dave Miller, Dubuque Hardwoods. I just want to make sure everyone can hear me.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Good morning. I guess, well, one concern was the traffic on Old Massey Road. We have total access to this property from inside our quarry, so it won't add to any of that. The majority of what it's going to be used for is storage of bulk mulch material. We're just, we're out of room inside the quarry and we need, in the offseason, to have more room to store material. Initial plans are no processing up there, just trucks unloading stockpile material until spring. We have a, similar to, you know, it's a seasonal business. We have three months to move almost 1,200 semi-loads a year is where we're at right now, and we have to store that until, until the season begins and we are just, we're out of room inside the quarry. Is there any other questions or anything else I can answer?
Mr. Miller, this is Supervisor Wickham. Maybe you can comment a little bit on, I guess, your neighbors, the Mines of Spain, and how you feel about that or what, how this may impact the Mines of Spain?
I, I don't see how, I don't see how it would impact it at all. The, the land that butts right up to it, we're storing material, we're doing exactly the same on that now, and it just, I, I don't know how that would, I, I don't see any difference on that. I went and met with the neighbors and, and talked to them and explained to them what we would be using it for. And, you know, they're, I think they're just worried that someday there could be a sawmill sitting up there, which is, you know, 100% would never happen. We just, we need storage and we need storage close, you know, we need storage that adjoins our, our existing property. And, and this is a, this is a perfect opportunity to do that. And, you know, I, I don't see any, I, I, you know, I don't think it's gonna, it's going to be a lot different than what's going on to the property that's already on top of the quarry that is zoned for us to do that. It's, it's, we're storing material there now. I, I don't see how that would be any different, I guess.
Just, Dave Schneider again, Schneider Land Surveying, just another comment. If this truly is mulch up on there, I mean, there's probably not a better erosion control method than to, because a lot of our add mixtures that we do on these residential sites are either compost or, or some type of mulch on top of the ground to, to control runoff. You know, the, the absorption ability of piles of, of mulch is huge. And so as, as long as they're controlling the edges, I think that, you know, this thing will actually take care of itself as far as a lot of erosion control on, on where they pile this stuff.
If I can ask one more question?
Yeah, you bet.
Is that a right board? I don't want to jump in.
Yes, go ahead.
There was a mayor, Sam had an issue, I believe, and Tammy can correct me, that there was, one of the close neighbors said that there was semi-automatic weapons being, they were practicing with them on the weekends there during the evenings. If you could maybe address that, that was one of Sam's concerns and mine as well.
The quarry is, there's three landowners in the quarry. In the, in the backside, the sawmill, which is owned by Midwest Hardwoods, they do, they do target practice back there. I don't believe there's semi-automatic weapons. I, I don't, I'm not a gun expert, but they are, they do do target practice on the weekends and later afternoons back there.
That could be happening in an A1 property as well, right? I mean, that doesn't, I appreciate the concern very much, but I think that the land use isn't going to be the controlling issue with regard to that and that would... Tammy Henry and McDonough, I have a question. Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
I was just going to say, if I could make one more comment on the land use, we have no intentions of logging anything up there immediately. None of the trees in the, in the area that we're purchasing from Matthew and/or River City have any value. It's more or less a retention basin right there. I, I just don't see where there's, there's any reason to log that. We're just looking for storage. There's probably six acres that can be used for storage, four acres of the, the hilly tree area. So if, if that's a concern, I don't, I don't see us logging. There's just nothing of any value there, no reason for us to do that. I think, you know, we asked for 10 acres. I think River City probably, it's a good, you know, it's all connected to what we have. They probably figured we might as well own the, their retention basin as them, I guess, would, you know. So if there's any concerns, I don't see that as a problem as well.
Tammy Henry, what is the zoning for the current location that they have?
For the current location they have is M1. Their current business location is M1.
And to do logging, is there any requirement that, must it be M1? That could be A1, correct? That's done on everybody's property.
Right, yeah, you could, I could own, you know, 60 acres and have it logged by a logging company as long as I was taking in consideration any of the erosion being caused by that.
Can you operate a sawmill in M1?
Yes, you can.
Mr. Miller, the question's been raised by a few different individuals about whether this could have a, a restriction on the zoning to limit this to storing wood products. Is that something you would consider?
I would. I would like to be able to store and process. So just to clear things up on the sawmill end of it as well, Citco has, has nothing to do with this. I operate Dubuque Hardwoods and Dubuque Mulch. I do not own the sawmill. We, we're tied into them. It was a sawmill that my father owned until 2000, and then, then he sold out. We work with them every day, but I do not own the sawmill. This land purchase has nothing to do with, with Citco. So there would, the, the sawmill is, is not even a non-topic, but I would like to be able to store material up there, and if the need would arise to be able to process up there someday. I don't see that happening in the near future.
If I may, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is Supervisor Wickham. Mr. Miller, what's the size and acreage of the intent that you plan to purchase?
It's 10 acres.
Same area that we're rezoning? The same area that we're rezoning?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. One of my other observations, I'll just say it now, is when I looked at the aerial map around the Mines of Spain, I was surprised at how much private property butts up against that. And so if you take a look at the map that's on our screen here, it's relatively close, the private property line to the actual road. And so I think as you do recreation in the Mines of Spain and/or even drive by, you're kind of assuming that that entire swath is, is owned by the, the state government and managed cooperatively, which is not the case. And so my, my comment to River City Stone, at least from my observation, they've been a very good neighbor to the Mines of Spain. I've never heard any comments or issues related to that. So, so I'm, once again, comfortable, I think, with, with the proposal at this point and ready to, to move to deliberation.
It's the last opportunity for public comment.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion second to close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I return that back to the Board of Supervisors for discussion. And my inclination would be, my prefer, my preferred method would be that there'd be something that would restrict this to storing wood products. The new owner of the property intends to also do some processing there. I'm not exactly sure what all the processing would be.
We've, we've in the past followed pretty close guidance from the zoning board, and they did not include conditions than they have in the past. So I would be less inclined to, to move in that direction. I would want to support the, the ruling of the zoning board. And so approving M1 without conditions at this point. I was, I assume the existing M1, Tammy, if you want to jump in, existing M1 has no conditions?
No, I'm not, I did not find conditions on those previous cases.
And was the, the option of conditions, was that discussed by the zoning board?
We always have that discussion, and, you know, this really didn't come up. There was some conversation, if, if you look in the minutes, there was some conversation about how they can lessen the impact, you know, you know, like being trees and things and visuals for the neighbors around it. But nothing was ever put in place that, that was their requirement. But I do know that the zoning board is open to, has always been open to any of those changes if the supervisors see that that would be something they would want to put in place.
Hello, this is Tom Buddy. Do you hear me?
I'm sorry, who is this, sir?
This is Tom Buddy. Do you hear me now? I tried to talk before and got cut off.
Mr. Buddy, based on that, I will allow you to proceed. This is actually at the supervisors only, but if you tried to speak before and were cut off, I would ask that you make your comments now.
Yes, just, Mr. Miller indicated they were storing mulch that can be done on agricultural ground. So there would be no need, need for an M1 rating?
I, I will step in and say that that is not for personal use, so it would require the M1 zoning because if I were, you know, a farmer and my, had some mulch on my ground that's for my personal use, this is not for personal use. This will be for the use of sale. And so that would require this M1 zoning.
Mr. Buddy, do you have any questions regarding that?
I, I disagree with it, but so be it.
Thank you. So back to the Board of Supervisors. Any other questions for Tammy?
I do not have any other questions or comments.
Tammy, the other dissenting vote on the issue at the zoning board, I had read it, I can't bring it up. I don't know if you have it there. Those were her concerns and hers were kind of relieved also, weren't they?
Yeah, they were. And they were the concerns of the neighbor who has withdrawn their statement of saying they were against it now or in favor of it. And it really had to do with the safety of a quarry. And so those, I believe, were put to, to ease, and so I've heard no more about that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Another thing I would raise is we're looking at six acres they know that they're going to use for storing wood products. I don't know what can be done on four acres for processing. I don't know what that means. I mean, obviously, we're talking logs, so you need some space to do that, to move things of that nature around. But, I mean, I would prefer to see a condition be placed on this. It is near the Mines of Spain and I would prefer that we have a little bit more control over. I don't really think a sawmill up there is a good idea. And if the landowner agrees with that, then that's probably something we'd like to have be maybe mutually agreed upon with a tabling or with, you know, future discussion.
Well, I agree with your, your comment that a sawmill wouldn't be great next to the Mines of Spain, nor would, you know, a facility with thousands of livestock, which would be allowed today, nor would the removal of trees in that area be allowed today. So, so there's, the private landowner currently has a lot of options that would, from my personal vantage point, would not be good related to being a neighbor of the Mines of Spain. And I don't think they've exercised hardly any of those. You know, we, we, we need, we need rock for houses, we need wood for houses, we need homes to be built in Dubuque County, and we need to have a supply chain that can do that. And that's the business these folks are in. And they would probably say we were here first. I'm not sure exactly when the Mines of Spain became a, an area. So, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to, to move forward. Harley, do you have any other questions or comments?
Just trying to, I guess, visualize about how big that section of ground is. I'm going to say it's probably over 150 acres, or close to, between 100 and 150. The 10 acres obviously is in the southwest corner, which is substantial distance from the Mines of Spain. I guess I don't have any issues with it at this point, I think.
So we want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the rezoning.
I will second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement. This amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
I'll make a motion that the amendment be adopted and the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the order be directed to range for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
I will second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. It's greatly appreciated. We'll move on to the next public hearing, which is ZC 091921, Paul and Sue Kemp, Back Trailer Sales, Inc., and Jody, new owner, R2 Single Family Residential to B2 Highway Business. Tammy, if you want to go ahead and proceed, please.
Okay. The applicants are requesting rezon from R2 Single Family Residential to B2 Highway Business, .60 of an acre, to be allowed to get their current property into compliance and to allow for the line adjustments. The property is located 3.96 miles southeast of the city of Dubuque along Windy Ridge and Route 52 South and is legally described as Lot 3 of Dubuque, of Main Place, Lot 1 of 2 of... of main place, lot one of two of, two of one of one of three of the northwest and lot two of windy acres and lot five of main place, lot one of two of two of three of the northwest, all in section twenty-seven, T eighty-eight north, R three E, Musalem Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Paul and Sue Kemp, Mac Trailer Sales, Inc. and Jody New Homer. Zoning in the area includes A one agriculture to the west and the south. R one rural business to the south, R two, single family, I'm sorry, R one rural residential to the south. R two, single family residential to the north and the east and B one business to the west. B two highway business to the west and M one light industrial to the south. The R two, single family residential to the west on zoning case number zero seven fourteen of oh eight was to allow for a single family home. The B one business to the west on zoning case number twelve forty-nine of ninety-five was to allow for the construction of a storage building for a masonry contractor. The B two highway business to the west on zoning case number seven thirty-five of ninety-six was to the purpose of bringing an existing non-conforming use into compliance with the ordinance. And the M one light industrial to the south on zoning case zero three ten of two was to allow one acre to be rezoned for truck and trailer storage. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to these properties. There was one special use permit and a variance attached to these properties. And the special use permit and variance were granted on BA case number zero eight thirty-four of ninety-four, which was to allow for the expansion of the existing commercial business in the R two, single family residential district. And it allowed the expansion to be nine feet away from the adjacent building, which is the applicant's home. And fifteen rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Dubuque was notified. Comprehensive Plan Chapter Eight Housing Page one twenty-two, Objective twelve point seven and Chapter Seven Economic Development Page one oh six, Objective seven point one may apply to this case. So if you, if you're looking at that aerial right now and you'll see that kind of pink line section. So what's going on here is the Kemp's are basically, um, getting older and they're trying to make sure that everything's taken care of. So that building that they are currently using for two purposes, actually. One of the purposes is so that it does, is you can see the expanding property, Mac Trailer Sales in the back. That is their family recreational area. Um, but this building is occasionally uses, they use it occasionally for some storage for the business. Very limited. It's really more for the other property, but this property where the business sits is not an acre in size at this point. The two homes, both to the east and the west, are all owned by the Kemp family as well. Uh, Ms. New Owner is the daughter of the, of the, um, of the Kemp family. So each of these lots, what they're trying to do is expand every one of those three lots into an acre in size so that when and if the time needs to have a septic repair, that they have the proper amount of property here. They originally come in to see us and, um, we got discussing things and, and looking into this to correct a problem that they already have. The way to fix that is to allow them to be able to expand this business to the back, um, for the business section so that if it ever needs a new sewer system, it will be done. And to the homes, both to the east and the west, they need the expansion as well. They will stay residential, but they need the expansion so that they, again, could be in compliance for any septic issues down the road. If anybody has any more questions for me, and just let me know.
Tammy, did this case come to you as a violation of any zoning standard?
No, it did not. The Kemp's came in because they're trying to, um, their daughter is going to sell, this would be the property over to the east, that home to her son. And we got into conversation about septics and, and, uh, what it would require. And in the conversation, the, um, we realized that, you know, we need to get this property into compliance when they explained that they are using that building somewhat for the business sometimes. So that, that's how we did.
Do we want to open this for public hearing? Do you have other questions for Tammy?
Tammy, this is Supervisor Pata. So the lots that the kids own will eventually extend out to where the end of the M1 would be?
Yeah, right. So it'll almost look like, you know, like each of those three lots are just going to go back about as far as you're seeing kind of that reddish pink line. And they would go straightly across the back. And that, again, is just to make sure that those, those would, then those can do that. We could do that right now with those. They can come in and request those in a plat and be fine. What we want to do is make sure that we're getting this other little section into compliance. Um, they didn't realize they weren't into, you know, in a, a problem. We, we found it when they came in to talk about expanding the one lot for the one home. So we're trying to correct all of the problems for them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will make a motion to open the public hearing.
I will second.
Motion second to open public hearing. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. That motion carries. We are now in public hearing. If there are members of the public who wish to speak about this case, they may do so at this time. If you're present, you can go to the podium. If you're virtual, you'll raise your hand to speak. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Give your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, Sue Kemp. Uh, address seventy-seven seventy, Windy Ridge, Dubuque. And we are the owners of the house on the left, shop in the middle, and was the owner of the house on the right at one time.
I'm Jody New Owner. Good to one seventy-four St. Catherine Road is my home address. That's my other house.
Thank you both for being here. So is there anything you wanted to let us know?
Not really. I just wanted to say that we're just trying to make sure we're covered in case it's necessary when they end up not being able to be, that something happens to one of them, if we have to. She's going to, they're going to give the other house when they pass away to my sister. So still be in the family, but we still want to have ability to have a proper septic if necessary. We have not had any issues with septic, but just to cover our bases.
I certainly appreciate the pre-planning. That's nice when there's family.
Trying.
Did I, did anyone have questions for the family?
I do not.
I have nothing.
Thank you very much for being present. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, ask for a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
I will second.
Motion a second to close public hearing. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. We are now back to the Board of Supervisors. Saying would have any additional questions or do you wish to entertain a motion?
Uh, make a motion to approve the rezoning.
I will second that.
Motion a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
I will second that.
Motion a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries.
Make a motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Thank you so much. Do you have your zoning request?
Thank you.
Next is the public hearing for case ZC oh nine dash twenty dash twenty-one. Herrick Family Trust, Ronald Herrick, A one agricultural request to A two agricultural residential. Tammy, back to you.
Okay, thank you. The applicants have requested rezon from A one agriculture to A two agricultural residential, three point five acres to be allowed to separate an existing home and buildings from the crop ground for sale purposes. This property is located one point zero nine miles southeast of the city of Dubuque along Old Massey Road and is legally described as lot one of Stone Quarry, number three, Section eight, T eighty-eight north, R three E, Musalem Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. The property is owned by the Herrick Family Trust. Zoning in the area includes A one agriculture to the north, the south, the east. R one rural residential to the west, R two, single family residential to the north, the south and the west. B one business to the south, M one light industrial to the west. And then the R one rural residential to the west on zoning case number nine thousand zero seven of seventy-five was to allow for a single family home. The B one business to the south on zoning case number ten twenty-four of ninety-eight was to allow four point nine three acres to be rezoned for the purpose of a landscape nursery, snow removal business, which included some retail sale of landscaping and nursery-related materials. The M one light industrial to the east on zoning case number twelve forty of oh two was to allow twelve acres to be rezoned for the operation of a sawmill and veneer log processing facility. The M one light industrial to the east on the zoning case number zero one zero five zero three was to allow ten acres to rezon for the operation of a saw and veneer log processing facility. And the M one light industrial on, to the east on zoning case number zero five eighteen of oh three was to allow for the three point five acres to rezon for the storage of logs using an sawmill operation. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special permits attached to the property. Fifteen zoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Dubuque was notified. Comprehensive Plan Chapter Nine Agriculture Natural Resources Page one thirty-four, Objective three point one and Chapter Eight Housing Page one twenty-two, Objective twelve point seven may apply to this case. So what the Herricks are, are, um, looking to do here is to sell off this house and these buildings because they're getting older and they just can't maintain them anymore. They want to keep the farm ground around it, but the buildings and the home that are on here, um, they're just looking to eventually have a sale for them. And, and they do, and they do, I'm sorry, and they do have the condition that, um, once this is separated, the best, the rest of that land would not be for future homes. And, and they are aware of that and have agreed to that.
Tammy, this Supervisor Wickham. Is it just coincidental this happens to be another zoning case right next to the previous one? They're not related at all?
They're not related at all. And it was just coincidental that they happened to come in the same month.
Are there other questions for Tammy? Otherwise we, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I will second that.
Motion a second to open public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Is there anyone who wishes to speak about this matter? Mr. Herrick? Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for your consideration. Um, as Tammy stated, um, I am going to be eighty years of age and have a little to take care of the property, but should something happen to me, hope not. Uh, I, I have a, I think my wife would have a difficult time taking care of it. And we would like to shove the three and a half acres off. It does not take any farm lands out of production.
Well, we appreciate that certainly. Is there any questions for Mr. Herrick?
I have nothing.
Nor do I.
Thank you for being present. Is there anyone virtually who wishes to address us on this matter? We have no one.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I will second.
Motion a second to close public hearing. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. We are now back to the Board of Supervisors. Is there any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. That motion carries.
Make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
I will second.
Motion a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. That motion carries.
Make a motion that the amendment be adopted and that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
I will second.
Motion a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate you being here. And you as well. I know we have plats. Next is the approval of the plat for the final plat for Sageville Farm number two. Tammy, are you leading us through that as well?
I am. Okay, so this property is owned by the city of Sageville and is partially located within the city limits of the city of Sageville with the remainder located in the unincorporated portion of Dubuque County with a total of thirty-three point seven eight acres surveyed. This property is zoned A one agriculture for the unincorporated portion located within Dubuque County. The purpose of the plat is to separate the crop ground from the timber ground for sale purposes. The survey creates three lots. Lot one is a total of eight point two zero acres surveyed of agricultural and timber ground that will be sold as non-buildable lot. Lot two is a total of twenty-five point zero four acres surveyed. That is a non-buildable lot that will remain in current ownership of the city of Sageville and in its current agricultural use. Lot three is a total of point five four acres surveyed and is located within the city limits of the city of Sageville and will be sold to the adjacent neighbor. Lot one will use a thirty-foot wide access eastman across lot two and lot two will have the access off of Lizer Lane. Lot three will have access from the adjoining land in common ownership. There were no additions or corrections required for the plat and there are no mortgages on this property and all the signatures are current. This plat was approved, um, seven to zero by the zoning commission. This plat has been reviewed by myself as a plats officer. It has all the required signatures. The size of the lots do not meet the ordinance requirements for the agricultural district. The survey has noted that on the lots and they are non-buildable lots. So I, I, because of the ordinance, cannot sign off on this as plats officer. It can be presented to you to have a review of it, but, um, just because each of these parcels of land are not a minimum of thirty-five acres and the balance pieces were, we are not guaranteed are for farm exemption purposes. So, um, that's the reason I can't sign off on it. I do know that, um, uh, uh, Mayor Kenneker was coming to speak about this. This was a situation of why weren't we just annexing it in? And if you'll look, um, Dawn, if you could go up to the, um, the, um, zoning map and show that to the board, which is showing the pinks and the blues. Um, there's a section in between the yellow there that is not, um, owned by this, it's not in the city. And so there was a problem with annexation or they just would have annexed this property of theirs into the city of Sageville. Anybody have any questions? Just let me know.
Well, I think that because it's something you cannot sign off on, I would appreciate, I know Mayor Kenneker is here. Uh, the mayor of Sageville, um, would you mind coming to the podium just to give us any, any background that you wish to share? It's unusual that we can't have our zoning administrator sign off on a plat. Normally plats run very smoothly and, and there's not a great deal for supervisors to do, but Wayne, I'd ask you to just maybe give a little bit of context.
Sure. My name is Wayne Kenneker. I live at one one six four five Lizer Lane. I'm the mayor of Sageville. Um, so our initial intent, as Tammy mentioned, was to, uh, annex the property into the city of Sageville and then handle it in that manner. Unfortunately, uh, one of the landowners, uh, has a small strip of land there. Uh, had agreed to the annexation, but then withdrew for some reason. When that happened, um, our next option in front of us uh, was to work with the county and hopefully allow the, uh, plat to be finalized. And then Sageville is basically, uh, going to sell the timber property off because there's no use for it as far as the city is concerned. It's not useless land. I don't want everyone to call any land useless. But as far as Sageville is concerned, a large majority of it is in the flood plain. Um, there's a creek, a small creek, bloody run creek that runs through it. Uh, access to it is very difficult. And there is, uh, as Tammy mentioned, both of those parcels, um, have been deemed as non-buildable. So it's not for development purposes. It's simply separating the timber from the, uh, tillable ground. And the city of Sageville would be selling the timberland uh, to a party that we already have a purchase agreement in place.
And Pato, one of the parcels you're going to continue to keep in agricultural use?
Correct. I would say that the lighter blue kind of in the center there where it says A one in that picture kind of represents the cropland that will continue to be cropland and continue to provide a source of income for the city of Sageville.
Does anyone have any questions for Mayor Kenneker or Administrator Tammy Henry?
Uh, I do. Um, in short, what would the benefit for the city of Sageville be by going through this process and then selling off that timber?
The benefit?
Yes. Uh, why do it?
Well, in two thousand fifteen, the city of Sageville purchased forty-seven acres, of which this was included in that forty-seven acres. There was really never a, uh, plan in place to do anything with the property.
What year was that you said?
Two thousand fifteen.
Oh, two thousand fifteen. Okay.
Yes.
Relatively recent. Relatively recent.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So there was really no plan for this portion of this seventeen acres. And so therefore it's property that is, uh, money had been spent on. And this is an opportunity for Sageville to recruit some of the money that was spent on, on property that is.
I'm not sure if you were at, on the city council then, do you know the reason why they bought it in two thousand seven, two thousand fifteen, if I can ask? It seems, you know, like, I, I, I'm generally familiar. I think I drove down there
Sure.
to, to take a look at it. And it does, it's not very accessible and, uh, quite a.
Having not been on the council at that time, but having been in some of those discussions, you can see in the upper right-hand, or I'm sorry, upper left-hand corner, there's kind of a oddly shaped, but there's seven lots up there that sits up on top of the hill in amongst, uh, several houses. And the, uh, city's real desire was to purchase that property.
For potential development, I would assume then, most likely, for.
I don't know the answer to what the intent of the council was.
Because normally when, you know, government. Because normally when, you know, government owns land, you're either going to try to develop it or preserve it potentially.
There was no plan on paper that I'm aware of for the property that was purchased, the 47 acres.
Thank you. And so, I don't know if it's for you or for Tammy, and so, would this plat then bring this, these parcels into the city?
No.
No? So they're owned by the city, but they're kind of an island still?
Correct. The initial intent was to bring all of the property, the 47 acres that was purchased by the city, into the City of Sageville.
In 2015, I would assume, right?
That process started, I'm going to say probably in 2016 to annex the properties. In fact, one of the parcels, it's Lot Three on the final plat, was actually annexed at that time, but there was, for some reason, the other parcels didn't get annexed at that time. And we would have ran into the same, well, potentially, we could have ran into the same issue, but again, for over two years, the annexation process for all of this was in play, and the property owner was in agreement up until a few months ago.
Okay, one more question.
Yes.
Do you know who owned the land before the City of Sageville bought it in 2015?
Who am I?
Person, a nickname, or a company?
I believe it's a company headed by Ken Moore.
Okay. So it was private, as recent as 2015, the City of Sageville purchased it, probably with the intent of connecting it, bringing it to the city, doing something, and now your intent, at least for one section, is to go back to private?
Correct.
Fair enough? Okay. Thank you. I think I get it. I was kind of wondering why all this was happening. Kind of a remote little strip.
Okay, Jay, the reason the city purchased this outside the city limits was because it was one or none. They had to because they were buying the lots in the city limits. It was all owned by the same people, and they wouldn't sell just the parcels. They said, you got to take the scrub ground too. So, that's why the city did that.
For purposes of people who may someday watch this video, that's Mary Hubble. She was the city clerk of Sageville at the time that this purchase occurred.
Dawn, can you go back to the first screen with, where it's got the Lot One, Two? Yeah, I'm just a little confused on this, Wayne. Lot One is what you're intending to sell, correct?
Correct.
That's showing 8.2 acres, you were saying 15.
Seventeen total. There's a lot to the north that is already a separate lot. I believe it's Lot 16 of Sageville Farm.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's where I was confused. No, no problem, thank you.
Again, I just, from my perspective, what the city wishes to do and your motivations are not generally questioned by me because you have a city council, and so you have your citizens you have to respond to. I think that joining you and approving the plat is an important action to take so that you can move forward with your plans, and there's not any reason, I understand technically why Tammy couldn't sign off, but just for us to be fully informed, you know, that's something that I personally do support, so. Any other questions? Very good.
No more.
So, and we should make a motion?
I'd make the motion to approve the final plat of Sageville Farm Number Two.
And I will second that.
Motion is second to approve resolution approving final plat. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda are action items, which the county may approve, deny, or table any action items. The first is a resolution approving hiring of deputies, assistants, and clerks. Dawn has screen shared the positions before us.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second.
Motion is second to approve the resolution. All in favor say aye.
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 That motion carries. Next relates to the cybersecurity grant. Our auditor wishes to make an application. He's at the podium. Do you wish to speak, Auditor Dragato?
Is there any questions you may have?
Is there any match on the grant required?
No. The $10,000 grant through Hoppa from the Secretary of State. We do not need to identify exactly what we're going to use those funds for in order to apply, but we'd like to apply and secure those funds, and then once we identify, we'll report back to the Secretary of State.
Sounds good.
Perfect.
Sounds good. I'd make the motion to approve the cybersecurity grant.
I will second that.
Motion is second approving the resolution. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. Thank you. The next is a resolution authorizing the chairperson to sign a Dubuque County annexation request, and I believe this concerns, this also the one that concerns Sageville, Mary? The language that was in our packet, is this one you're screen sharing, is it the same or different?
Since the mayor is here, I'd love to hear from him if he would like to speak.
Thank you. So, the reason for the annexations that came to us from citizens within the county were, there were four parcels near the intersection of Mud Lake Road and Cheryl Road. So those four individuals came to the City of Sageville, requested annexation. Their primary reason was for access to good internet down in the valley. Those four parcels have very poor access to any type of internet right now, and so by coming into, being annexed into the City of Sageville, Sageville has a franchise with MediaCom, and they would then be able to receive service from MediaCom. With that in mind, there is currently no overlap, I'll say, of city, current city property and the parcels involved. And so, one option is, there's a very small, I don't know, is there a map associated with that?
No, we don't have a map.
No? Okay. Yeah, yeah, it's a very, just a sliver, and it's mainly, I'll call it ditch, that is on the left-hand side as you're going up Cheryl Road, just as you pass Mud Lake Road. So, the idea was if we were able to, if the county was willing to have that annexed in or request voluntary annexation of that property into the City of Sageville, then we would have our 50 feet overlapping and be allowed to proceed with the annexation requests of the four parcels right near Mud Lake Road and Sageville Road.
Another unusual one, but that's okay. I do have a question. Can you comment on the taxation and the changes in that, the taxation that Sageville has currently related to their levy, and how that would change the taxation related to property taxes for those parcels that would then be in the City of Sageville?
So, my understanding of, as far as Sageville is concerned, there's two cities in the state of Iowa that do not collect property tax. Sageville is one of them, Bangston is the second. So therefore, when, when properties would be annexed from the county into the City of Sageville, they would not see any tax, any city tax on their properties.
And the rural service tax from the county would be removed, is that correct?
They would, that is correct, but they would still pay, they would still pay the...
The front side of it, so to speak, as we called.
Correct, correct. There would still be a portion of the county tax that is, just like there is for any other city.
Yeah, we get to sit up here and we text all the property owners from Dubuque County, so I only say that lightly, that's just kind of how that works.
Correct.
And then if you're in the rural, unincorporated areas, you pay the full levy, which includes our rural services for roads, zoning, and, help me out, Mary, roads, zoning, missing one, library services is the third. So there would be a reduction in tax for those people that would be annexed into the city, and I'm not contending, you know, saying that is wrong, just maybe pointing that out that that is a change that would occur. A very small one related to the county taxation. That's the only question I have, or statement.
I have nothing.
The resolution before us has a minor word change. Just point that out to my colleagues.
Northeast one?
The documents presented in the packet and going to publication, there were two inconsistencies, but, one, the letter from the Sageville attorney did not have, it was just an unfinished sentence. I believe that was corrected by our auditor this morning, and then the other is the language changed from requesting annexation on behalf of the county to consenting to annexation or supporting annexation. I'm personally uncomfortable requesting annexation of county property, so rather, I asked the language say, "support" or consent to annexation, so that we're not the moving party. But I don't know if you can, anyway, as you read that, that is the resolution that is being proposed that I would be signing today if it meets with your approval.
I think I followed your comment, you'd be more comfortable changing the language, having edited the language?
I asked the auditor to change the language.
The screen reflects the edit.
Correct. For transparency, I'm pointing out that this document's different than what you saw in your packets and reviewed prior to this meeting.
Okay.
So I'm voting.
So that's the language you're comfortable with?
This is my preferred language, that's correct.
Okay. Good enough.
I'd make a motion to approve the annexation.
And I'll second that.
Motion is second to approve the resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kenneker. Thank you, Auditor Dragato. Our next resolution concerns election security policy. I think our confirmation, our communication on this will be kind of a light touch because it does concern security.
So, the auditor's office is proposing that we take our election security policy that is an internal document and classified as a confidential public record, which would exempt that policy and certain items pertaining to that policy from FOIA requests. This was a presentation that our deputy and I saw at one of our recent continuing education events, that a number of counties are moving towards protecting passwords, combinations, model numbers, and makes of certain equipments, and while we are thoroughly behind transparency, there are some things that, in order to protect our free and fair elections, that we need to have the availability to keep. So that's what this resolution leads to. I did not, for obvious reasons, attach our election security policy, and I did send this off to our county attorney as well.
Anyone have any questions? Their motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second.
Motion is second to approve the resolution. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you. The next is a resolution to approve language of support for the University of Dubuque's request to bring a Fulbright scholar in residence, which is pretty awesome. Did, that's the letter that I would sign to support this if my colleagues are in favor.
Fully in favor.
Totally in favor.
I'm a Fulbright scholar, so I'm very proud. I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second.
Motion is second to approve the resolution. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Next is a resolution approving the joint agreement with the City of Dubuque for the Industrial Center Economic Development District. This is an update to the urban renewal area. Jill Connors is present here before us, as well as, we also have Rick Dickinson, who's the Executive Director of Greater Dubuque. Do we have any questions? Do you wish to have any information presented?
I don't specifically have any questions, but if there, if the board would feel it'd be appropriate just to have a comment from the city or the economic development director, I think that would, would help.
I do not have any questions either. Jill, did you have a brief comment you wish to make? We need your name and address for the record, please.
Jill Connors, Economic Development Director for the city, 2326 Gordon Drive. Just as a recap of what we're doing here, what, this talks about the 156 acres that are being purchased by the city from River City Properties out near Tamarack Park. The intent here is to include this in the Dubuque Industrial Center West, TIF district. And in order to do that outside of city limits, a city has to request a joint agreement with a county in order to exercise the city's urban renewal authority within two miles of city limits, but outside of city limits. We've done this before on several occasions. One of those occasions was in 2016 when we worked with the county to include properties where your new buildings are, out in Cycle Road, and so, the county had actually requested the city include those in the city's industrial center west in order to provide the sort of funding and financing needed in order to move those projects forward. So this is all in the name of economic development for these areas.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I have nothing.
None for me, but I would like to hear from Rick Dickinson if he would be interested in speaking.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Rick Dickinson. I reside at 205 Hill Street, Dubuque, Iowa, and I am the President of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, but really, for your constituents, I wanted to make some comment here about what we're doing to notify those folks in unincorporated Dubuque County about the proceedings, and also to apologize that I did not give notice of this one. I had, I caught this one at 7:55 last night, so, and although there is no opportunity for public input, this particular question to the supervisors, I want you to know that Greater Dubuque Development has agreed and has sent a personal correspondence and tried to reach out where we had email and/or phone numbers to approximately 80 property owners in proximity to this 156 acres, all of which would be in unincorporated Dubuque County along Military Road and in the lanes that go south of Military Road. About a week and a half ago, we informed them of two actions taking place currently, one being the annexation of that property, and the other being the acquisition, a third being the transfer or extension of the TIF from the Dubuque Industrial Center West to this property. The next public input action, which we notified those folks of that 80-plus in a personal correspondence, and will be followed up with phone conversation and/or email, is a public hearing which will be held by the City of Dubuque on November 1st. So, our office is in full support of the acquisition of this property and all the actions necessary for it to be an extension of continued economic growth in Dubuque, but we do feel a duty and obligation to notify your constituents, the residents along Military Road and a number of cul-de-sacs and Katy Cove residents of this action. So I just wanted you to know that.
I appreciate those actions to reach out to the members of the public.
Rick, if you would just like to add the time and the place for that meeting on November 1st?
Yes, Supervisor Partov, the meeting will be November 1st at 6:30, and there will be two actions at that meeting, one being this action, which is the extension of the TIF, and the other would be the annexation of the property, both of which will be public hearings, which we've already notified the folks of that. We'll be sending a reminder out prior to that meeting on the 1st.
And that's at the Federal Building, Greg?
I'm sorry, yes, it'll be at the Federal Building at the city council chambers at 6:30 that night, and I do believe there will be a remote opportunity for those who are unable to attend personally.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you both. Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve the resolution?
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution with the city.
Yeah, I will second that.
Motion is second approving the resolution. To approve the joint agreement with the city, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Our next resolution concerns a 28E agreement with apparently the, it's obviously Dubuque County 28E agreement, but it comes from our public health department, concerns a, the Department of National Resources, the Iowa DNR, for our private well permitting. I don't know if Patrice was able to join us?
Yes, I am on Supervisor McDonough.
Good morning, Patrice. I apologize for your long, your long wait. Can you give us just some background on this?
Absolutely. This overall agreement is in place for the counties to have the authority to issue well permits. The DNR does update this agreement every five years. The only change in this update from five years ago is section 7, 5, and then it's small, 2, and then it's numbers 1 through 5. And what this category is, is permit application, review, and permit insurance. The DNR wants to ensure through this agreement that all county public health departments review the environment before issuing a permit. So they basically just want to make sure that we all do an environmental review. The DNR is going to be providing us with a tool that, it's called Facility Explorer Tool. And this tool will help us find the distance to contaminated sites and leaking underground storage tanks. They will be giving us an in-service on how to utilize this tool once they do receive this 28E agreement. And then, once we find, if we use this tool and we find that the soil is contaminated, then we have to let the DNR know immediately. Then the DNR will do the further investigation and then they will get back to the county public health departments on whether we can issue a permit for that well or not. So that's really the only change from five years ago is that the DNR wants to ensure an environmental review is done before we permit a well permit through the public health.
Very good. Thank you, Patrice. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't have anything.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the 28E agreement.
I will second.
Motion is second to approve the resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Patrice. I appreciate your extra time.
Sure, thank you.
Next is the resolution to approve the EcoService funding from Muzina. And the, and there's also followed by the second resolution concerning a work session that I believe we're going to have today. We have been tabling these in the past. I guess if I might just make comments. I would like to attend the family funeral at 11:00, so I will not be here for the work session. That is my intent. I've looked at all of these things and for whatever that is worth, I'm fine with the two of you moving forward with that work session. And I've contacted Eric Schmeckel. I think I'm up to date. And there's of course memos in the packet as well. But if you could proceed, that would be my wish, that I'm able to attend that funeral. If you want to move to table until you have your work session to get all of your answers.
Make a motion to table letter H and letter I to the work session.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to table the resolutions for EcoServices funding from Muzina and the Dubuque County land owner payments from the Land Stewardship Fund. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next on our agenda are communications. And the first communication is from the City of Dubuque regarding the industrial center. We also have a letter from the City of Dubuque for annexation of 51.56 acres. Letter from the City of Dubuque concerning the 156.25 acres. We want to take those in one motion.
I'd make a motion to receive and file.
I will second that.
Motion is second to receive and file. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Our next is a letter of resignation from Azaleum Township Clerk. Thanking her certainly for her help. I believe it's Kim is a female. Is that correct? Yes. And then Mary was, sent me a screenshot of the resignation notice. And we have already identified someone who will fill in as the township clerk.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the resignation and Kim for her service.
I will second and also relay the thank you for the time spent on the township.
Motion to receive and file a letter. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Next we have appointments. First appointment is, I think I asked Molly Grover from the chamber to send an email. That's what you have in your packet. This is a sub, informal, maybe sub-council of the Chamber of Commerce. I explained to Molly, we don't like to do board appointments for purposes of adding to the things that we then appoint to each other in January, right? When we go through our list of purposeful things that we appoint each other to serve on in official capacity. She assured me that's not what this is. This is a group that meets. I don't know, Jay, if you know more about it. If you wish to do it as part of the chamber work that you do, I just asked her. She said protocol would require she come to me as chair. And then, of course, I asked that we bring it to the three of us to say, does anyone want to do this informally? I don't like board designee because I don't want to trip up ourselves. In January, again, when we try to research how we got onto 30 different boards and committees. So that's where we are.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great opportunity. They asked us for a, for a designee. I don't necessarily believe it has to be a supervisor, nor am I interested in necessarily volunteering the position. But I think if given the appointment, I think we should take it and see if we, amongst the three, would find an individual that'd be interested in serving on that. That's how I'd like to proceed.
So do you want to table this for an official appointment of a designee? Let's give ourselves two weeks to find such a person. I mean, Ed Raiber could likely do this for us and certainly probably is comfortable doing this. But if we want to ask someone else who we think might have other, I don't know. Do you want to table? Do you, I think it should come back to us to make sure that we're not missing an opportunity.
Agreed, and I think two weeks is fine.
I agree with that.
Whether we feel as a board that we'd want an internal person like a staff member like Ed Raiber to do it or a member of the public is probably a, just a question. I was, wasn't thinking actually an internal staff member. I was thinking more of a member of the public that might want to volunteer, that has an interest in air service and travel. A lot of business people do, you know, because it's a vital service that they need.
As I was looking at it more as probably an internal position, things that's through the chamber. That's, that was my personal feeling. I don't.
I guess I'm open either way. I, you know, I think you're, there's probably not a lot of power, so to speak, or authority on this task force. It's I would listen and learn and provide feedback and input. Nor do I have a vote on the chamber.
Right.
So we're just proxies.
Let's do, I would suggest we table it and we can certainly visit with Ed. I mean, that gives us a great feedback loop if there's information we need to know. Ed would be first on, on deck with that. But also if, if anyone knows of a person that you wish to have in a private capacity who uses the airport, I think that's also very valuable. We could use that someone who's, who's using that service frequently. No one comes to my mind right out of, right out of the gate, so.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to the table for two weeks for a decision and appointment.
I will second that.
Motion is second to table for two weeks. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. The last issue is the open vacancies. And I would just note that we do have our own appointments as supervisors to the compensation board. I have begun to reach out to individuals, prior supervisors and some city manager, excuse me, city mayors who also set budgets and might be able to present that perspective. So just for disclosure and updates, I don't have, and I've indicated, anyone who wishes to do that's going to have to go through the application process. But just to let you know that that's underway with me. Any comments or questions about that?
No.
No, we're, personnel requisitions, we have one for law enforcement, for the sheriff's office.
I would make a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
And I will second that.
Motion is second to approve the personnel requisition. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. We come to the comments, public comment section at the end of our meeting. If anyone wishes to address the board about matters which are of concern to them, they may do so at this time. You may use the podium in the boardroom. If you're present, otherwise on Zoom, please raise your hand in the reactions budget button on Zoom or enter a comment quickly in chat indicating you wish to speak and we will unmute you. We'll hold a moment to see if anyone wishes to engage the board of supervisors. While we do that, I just want to express my appreciation to my colleagues to continue on with the work sessions. And Mary, I will be back to sign the documents from today's meeting. Is there anyone, Don, who wishes to speak? Very good. So.
Make a motion to recess until 10:45.
I will second.
Motion is second to recess until 10:45. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye, that motion carries. We are at recess.
The supervisors back in the session, 10 a.m. work session, which we're running a little behind on with Eric Schmeckel to discuss watershed program projects. Eric, are you there?
I am here. Good morning.
Good morning, Eric. Morning.
I am sitting in a car, Heritage Trail parking lot, so just trying to, trying to get through this little bit. We're with the JEO consultants are in town today doing a field tour of the Northern Dubuque County Watership, kind of working on our, on our WFPO project. But I did want to go over the memo with you and talk about a couple of projects that, one of them is basically kind of, I think, waiting and hoping to get approval for today as they got a contractor, I think, ready to go. And that it would be the Joe Muzina project application. The Muzina has applied for a sediment grade control structure out just north of the city of Upworth, actually very close to the Hoffman project. The Soil and Water District Commissioners did approve the, the project using state cost share dollars. So similar to the Tom Shiltz project, if you remember right about Tom. They are, are cost sharing his project at 50%. And the Muzina has applied through the Dubuque County Watership Program to get him to that 75% cost share. Similar design and approach as, as the Shiltz and the Hoffman structures. I believe you should have the engineering documentation in the, in the packet that was sent out last week as well, too. So just, I guess, any questions, discussion on this project?
What was the county share of that, Eric?
Well, let's see. It was in the memo. Had it up in front of me. Well, let's see, it was in the memo, had it up in front of me.
Might be on the resolution.
Might be, uh, I believe it is on the resolution that Ed had sent out here. Let me see if I can.
Don, are you clicking on trying to open one of those threads? Like, there. There you go, there you go.
So, yeah, it was, uh, just over 14, 14,000. The total pro, uh, total cost project estimate was 56,000 and, and again, the SWCD state funding, uh, did approve last Monday at their board meeting, um, 25,000.
Okay, just for transparency is-
So, so, I think the final number, the county piece from Eco Services is 17,568.50?
Correct.
That's what I'm seeing. Okay. Yeah, I, I do not have any questions and I support the project and appreciate all the, the work that's gone into preparing and the, the design and, and the approval for the other funding. So, I will make a motion to approve the, uh, resolution for the Joe Mazzina structural project.
I will second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We want to take that next resolution, aye? The next with the, just the two, two Tera payments that are kind of hanging out there, so to speak?
Was Eric, yeah.
Eric, are you still on?
I am still on, yeah. So, we had two more True Terra, uh, payments come in, or not payments, two more True Terra applications come in. Um, Stephan Meiser and Klein both applied using the True Terra model, uh, to do cover crop, cover crops this fall. Um, so we're starting fiscal year '22 and kind of making the push where we have been working with True Terra and the team on making some changes to, to the funding, more specifically on that nitrate sampling. Um, and we're, we're looking at a kind of a revamped model sometime after the new year, probably for, for '22. Uh, these two applications were, were just, uh, were, were for the additional no-till cover crop, uh, practices on their, on their property. So, I, I, I did want to try and get these, these two approved, uh, to get the cover crops in for this fall yet.
Very good. I will make a motion to approve the landowner payments for the land stewardship fund with the True Terra Initiative for Stephan Meyer and Klein.
And I will second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Did you have anything else, Eric, or?
Uh, that's all I had, that's all I had this morning. Thank you for, uh, thank you for the time.
Not a problem. Thanks for what you're doing and hope you're having an enjoyable day out touring the county in the rain.
Well, hopefully the sun pops out a little bit, but we're, uh, we're at, we have a couple of meetings set up in Dyersville later today and, uh, we'll get some, we'll get some drone footage and it's good, uh, to meet these, uh, the, the guys from J E O face to face and in person and, and kind of catch up and go over some of our, our hotspots in the county. So, uh, definitely keep you, keeping a loop and update on, on this as it, as it progresses.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
Yep, thank you.
We'll move on to our work session with the Budget Director for an A R P A update. Stella?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Stella.
So, this morning, we wanted to regroup and talk about the presentations that we're going to be scheduling for, um, our Rescue Plan Act funds, um, and the applications. Uh, the first group that we're going to start with were regarding our mental health funding and anything that could potentially also be funded from or co-funded with our, um, M H D S fund balance. So, just a reminder, our mental health fund balance must be spent by June 30th of 2022. Whatever's left will go to the state as they change that funding stream, uh, for next year. So, we're trying to, uh, use those funds now, um, otherwise they will be given to the state at that time. So, uh, we've had several meetings this week, um, with, uh, our Mental Health and Disability Services Director, A C, and also the working group in May, Hinchen, the, the regional coordinator, um, to discuss the projects that we have received and what could possibly go in front of the region. So, uh, we came up with a list and a kind of schedule for, uh, October 18th, so next week, and then November 1st. So, let me share my screen. Okay, so the highlighted, um, external applications are the ones that we identified that have a potential, uh, mental health funding component. So, the first being Catholic Charities, um, then as I scroll down, we have Goodwill Industries potentially, um, three from Hillcrest Family Services, uh, a request from Mercy One, the Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging, and River View Center. So, we'll be asking, uh, these organizations to make presentations to the board, um, on the 18th and the 1st. Um, and also, there is a request from our Mental Health, uh, Services Department for, uh, what they call the Take Care Center. So, that will also come before you, um, on the 18th. So, the schedule, we plan to look at, um, that M H D S proposal for the Take Care Center, Catholic Charities, and River View Center on the 18th, and then on the 1st, Mercy One, Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging, Hillcrest, and potentially Goodwill. So, um, in talking with A C in May, November 17th will be our last day to get any agenda items on the Regional Governing Board Agenda for November. They will not be meeting in December. So, we would like to get anything, um, potentially approved in November to allow these organizations to start by the first of the calendar year, knowing they'll only have about six months to complete their project.
The summary of, one, what the fund balance is for, for our projects, and then, two, what is the summary of those highlighted ones?
Sure. So, um, the fund balance, we believe, is about $1 million remaining, um, after the projects that have already been approved. So, we've already approved, uh, one for the community foundation, Greater Dubuque, is around 200,000, and we approved one for Hillcrest Family Services for about 57,000. So, after those, we believe we have about a million dollars to work with in fund balance. And the total on these would be- Part of this as well is that, um, some of these requests only have a component of it that could be funded by the region. So, it would either have to be co-funded with our American Rescue Plan Act funds and fund balance, um, so that's a component. So, for example, we know, um, in research, and these are Mercy One Fountain Dubuque Foundation, um, potentially 10 to 20% of that could be fund balance. The rest would have to come from, uh, Rescue Plan Act funds. But the total of these highlighted is 2,255,543.
All right. What was that number again, Stella?
And then we also have the Take Care Center, which may or may not have a component that deals with fund balance, but that's, uh, about 3 million, if I remember correctly.
And that's not on this list?
That is not.
That just come in separately and how is it?
So, that is an internal department request. So, that's from our own, um, Director of Disability Services, Ann Cameron.
Okay. All right. Got it.
That one is-
So, another 2 million, 2. what?
2.8, 2.9.
Okay. And so, we plan to include that in our discussions?
Yes.
Okay, so that's-
So, we're gonna look at all of the potential mental health funding areas first. That's where we're kind of starting in the process.
Roughly three, four, five, so six total, but some of these will be a percentage, so it actually will go down.
Yes.
Won't be 6 million. Okay. Any guesstimate on what would be in that brain health category that we might, as we review these?
So, um, meaning how much of this is brain health?
Yeah, so, for example, if you have Mercy One highlighted, and so that's gonna come before us, and we're gonna look at it and we're gonna say, hey, is, can we use some of the existing fund balance projects? And then if we can, great, and if we need to go into the next budget of American Rescue Funds, we'll be talking about that.
So, for that one, um, based on discussions with Ann Cameron, um, in Mercy One, we're thinking probably 10 to 20% of the million could be fund balance.
Okay. And so, but we still, the board still could approve the whole thing using American Rescue Funds as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But the goal, um, of course, is to use the fund balance now, while we can.
Do you feel with, with, that we'll easily be able to have, we have over a million dollars worth of projects?
We do.
That would be percentage of-
Um, some of them have already come before you, um, the Hillcrest Family Services one, so, um, 728,500, um, they talked about the staff recruitment and retention.
Mm-hmm.
And so, they were, you know, that's still in discussion. Um, also, the Access Need Care Platform, that's nearly 400,000. They talked about that when they were here a few weeks ago. So, um, there's just still some, uh, guidance that they need to hear, yes or no, kind of on those projects to move forward.
So, the, the plan is we'll re, we'll dive deeper next week on these and then we'll, once that we feel should go to the region, we'll go to the region?
Yes. So, um, we'll have three proposals on the 18th and three or four on the 1st. We'll give them, uh, probably about 20 minutes to present their idea or, you know, their, their concept, and then allow the board to ask any questions that you feel like you need for clarification on anything. So, the plan is to do about 45 minutes per entity, um, to allow them presentation time and then Q and A time from the board.
And the general plan is then to hopefully eliminate or select those that would go to the region?
Yes.
And then whatever ones don't go to the region can have their own fate through the American Rescue Funds as well?
Yes.
Okay. I think I got it.
So, that's the plan to start with that. After we've, um, worked through these, we'll start, our next step will be, um, the entities or the, the, the people that applied for our purchase of service program in December, well, and then, uh, reapplied under the American Rescue Plan Act, we'll start looking at those next.
And roughly, when would that timeframe? I've had a couple of people contact me saying, when's this gonna happen?
Um, I would say, uh, we'll start looking at that in November.
November, okay.
So, lots to do with this. We'll just keep, um, moving along and bring this forward, um, every week or so, we'll have, uh, presentations starting to schedule.
And then the, the bucket of holdovers, so to speak, that we're asked to apply to the American Rescue Funds?
Mm-hmm.
That is 20 some, 24 applicants in that neighborhood?
Ooh, I feel like it's more than that.
More than that now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'll have to take a look at that, I'm, I-
I remember it was tw- mid twenties and 1.6 million a while back.
Yes, it, yes.
Okay. All right. And then, uh, what, uh, what have you thought about or what do you need help with related to guidance? I know the auditor talked last week about, you know, hey, I wanna make sure that the review and they can fit into their, their buckets and their, their compliance. Any comment on how we're gonna do that? We're just gonna do it on the fly or do you, we plan to have more of a formal review? What, any thought on, I'm asking more than my directors.
So, part of what we're doing as a working group, um, when we look at these, while we think, uh, upon first review, aid to nonprofit is an acceptable use of American Rescue Plan Act funding. So, we think that most of these probably could be funded with American Rescue Plan Act. All of them probably should not be, based on, um, their ability to adhere to the federal compliance. So, there's gonna be a materiality concept, um, as part of this. If, you know, some of our smaller requests, you know, pick one out of there, there's a couple for 3,000 or 7,000, those entities probably don't fit really well under a federal grant.
Yeah, I would think that would make sense. And potentially the board could either dismiss them altogether or fund them through-
Yes.
-general funds if we, we felt it was-
Yes.
-applicable and, you know, fits under Iowa law, Iowa code.
The part of, I-
A second. They would still have to go by the guidelines of reimbursement, on that, right, Kevin?
Yes. Yes, um, so to add to Stella's point, to a degree, what we were talking about and exploring was the ability to separate out, here are ones that may not be a great fit for A R P that may be better under general basic or even other, other funding streams that we can identify, in order to make more straightforward and simplify the process as a whole. But yes, they would still have to, e- everything's still gonna have to meet public purpose and everything that we were thinking about earlier this year and throughout the year. Um, but to her, to Stella's point as well, most of these items can be, should be able to be fit in under A R P. It comes down to a question of whether they should be.
You mentioned, so, the nonprofit status, uh, 501(c)(3)(6), so that would be Chamber, Greater Dubuque, are those nonprofit eligible?
Yes.
Okay.
So, everything under Code Section 501(c), multiple numbers, fall under tax exempt status with the I R S, so that's what those are. So, we mostly hear-
Eligible.
I just, I believe so.
Okay.
You mostly hear about 501(c)(3), that's a traditional nonprofit, but of course, there's six and ones and various things.
And then, as we, as we move through this process, we will be also reaching out to our auditors and any other entities that we need to, to do that double check, to verify that we're not gonna run into any issues down the road. So, their, their voice, while not at the table each week when we have our meeting, is definitely a voice that we are considering and using throughout this process.
So, all of the, uh, applications that are on here have basically been vetted and do qualify or?
I wouldn't say that they have been vetted yet. So, this list is everyone that's applied. So, as we, you know, take these chunks out and start analyzing them, so we're starting with the mental health services. That's the chunk we've taken out and analyzed so far of, um, the conversations with May and, um, A C have been, you know, would this qualify? Would the region potentially fund this? Could we use fund balance if the, if the board would like to move forward?
I'm, I'm talking just in general, overall, not just the mental health of-
Right.
Anybody's, I mean, I'm trying to get through all of them.
Yeah.
I've seen a few that I thought, well, I don't know if they really qualify for A R P funds, so I didn't know if our internal group were going through and say, well, this doesn't apply, so, you know, take it out.
We will be analyzing all of these. We just have not done full analysis on each of them yet.
Okay. My preferred method would be certainly go through the review and if you have an opinion, list that, but to make sure it's listed, not just to omit, so that we can, you know, uh, have their day, so to speak, that they were selected or marked one way or another, even if it's-
Absolutely.
-to the detriment of whoever filled in the application. So, for example, then, um, uh, I'm looking for like Greater Dubuque on there, there they are, number 40. So, uh, you know, if they're a nonprofit and we traditionally would fund them, so to speak, that would be that next batch. Um, huh, so, this is all the A R Ps?
This is all A R Ps.
Okay, and so all external A R Ps, which was 70?
64.
64, I believe.
64, I think, if I remember.
19 million.
I saw some line 70, so that's probably why, okay, heading stuff. So, um, you got 60- So you got sixty-some of those, and then how many of those, is that the number? We're not sure, twenty-four are the next batch?
Yeah, approximately.
So we've got, I forget how many you had up here for the brain health issues ones. That might be, if you don't break out of groups, you have like eight yourself?
Sure.
Not just, you know, Hillcrest B one, so.
Yeah, eight.
Okay, and then the next group would be twenty-some, right? We're not sure exactly how much that would be, how many of those would be. And then say twenty-thirty, and so now you're almost to halfway.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep. So we could go pretty quick for that second batch. And then the ones that are newer and brand new, first time applications for the American Rescue Funds, that's really kind of the meat and potatoes that we're getting to.
I think so.
Which, I know they're third in line, and that was one of my requests. I feel kind of bad about that, but I think it will lighten the load on the general basic a little bit.
I think this will help clear the way for the bigger things that are really American Rescue Plan Act and to allow you to kind of clear this list a little bit and focus on what those things are.
Okay. The other request, or at least I would be interested in having kind of a running total when we're doing this. So I don't know how you're gonna present that.
Absolutely.
Very good, you know, kind of just like ding ding, you know?
I've already been working on that mentally.
Yeah.
We need a whiteboard back there.
Yeah, kinda like if you ever do the flots, you know? You've got your total there and it just keeps going down on how much you, credit you have left.
Yeah. Because of course, it's not really represented in this list, but we talked about it last week, of our, funding our loss first, so our revenue losses and holding aside part of our funding for that. And for also the pandemic as it develops, if there's going to be additional needs, we would like to have that set aside ready and evaluate that annually, obviously, or at least annually as we move forward.
And we don't have, I mean, we're not looking at this moment, any internal requests.
Right.
So kind of when we start making some decisions, I would maybe hopefully still hold some of those up, saying, hey, do we still have, you know, I forget what the number was, but forty-some internal requests or something like that?
Forty-six and a half million in requests.
Forty-six million, okay.
Also, we have received half of the rescue plan funding so far. That's what we have in hand. I wouldn't, I would recommend not allocating more than what we have in hand as we walk through this process as well. So we anticipate that we'll get the second half, they told us approximately one year after the first, no, earlier than one year.
So the amount that the county we get, would we get another?
So we've received nine point four million roughly. Our total is about eighteen point nine million. And we have received that nine point four in May, I'll say.
Right, but we got, like, the county gets one point five or six or seven or something?
So our revenue loss for FY twenty-twenty, which was at twelve thirty-one twenty, was about one point eight million. So that has to come out of that. We don't get it in addition.
That comes out of, right.
Yeah.
But would we get another payment out of the next nine million? Or could we take half of it out of this one and half out of the next one?
So we can take it as we choose, I believe. We measure it at four periods. So we'll measure it again at twelve thirty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Okay, so we would have the potential of getting more for the county out of the next payment also?
Yeah, I kind of look at it as a whole. I just wouldn't allocate it beyond what we have in hand. So I wouldn't commit it to any external organization if we don't have it yet.
Oh, right, I understand that. I'm looking at what we're allocated, the one point eight million.
Yes.
For the loss.
Yes.
We'll get a loss for twenty-one, or that's uncertain?
It's uncertain because we will calculate it at those points in time. So my suggestion was to hold about five million aside for that of the total, knowing that we're measuring it at those four points in time. And as we get closer, or we hit any of those points and see we do or do not have a loss, we can kind of adjust it as we move.
Okay, alright, that's what it is, okay.
Yeah.
Has there been any guidance related to actually dispersment of funds? So you've got these projects, they're all looking forward. Is there any guidance related to a lump sum versus staged in? And does dollar amount matter? So you got a one million dollar handle on one of those, I see in there. Like, sure, here's one million, or we're gonna do increments? And obviously, ones that are smaller, you might just drop them. Any comment about that, how that would happen?
I think our best practice would be, as we move through these, we would be contracting with these organizations. So under the contract, we would probably want to work under a reimbursement process, depending on what the project is. But I think that would probably be our best practice.
But we have discretion related to that?
Yes.
Okay, so if there would potentially be a capital item, for example, where they might need the funds to do something, that might be a, forcing them to go out and get a loan to cover that?
I think it would warrant discussion from the board.
Discussion, okay.
He would like to handle it.
And then if it's a smaller amount, it might be easier just to disperse and then, you know, follow up with obviously the record keeping and the audit and that kind of thing?
The record keeping is gonna be very crucial under the plan. So we are subject to federal audit under this for seven years beyond our last dollar spent. So if we're spending dollars up until twenty-twenty-six, we're subject to audit for seven years beyond that.
Have you gotten to the point where you either feel or think that you might need additional staff or help for that compliance and record keeping?
Yes, I think it's likely at this point. Up until this point, we obviously have not spent the money. We've been planning and working through how we will do this. But I think as we move forward and taking action to fund these and then monitor them, I think it would definitely warrant financial staff.
Okay.
Which is a allowable expense under this fund as well.
Okay, good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Sounds like we're taking steps, we're getting closer, getting more organized. And next week will be our first week actually reviewing, so.
Yes.
Just as a reminder, I'll be zooming in next week.
Okay.
So.
So for next week, we will have the proposal from the MHDS Department from Ann Cameron, Catholic Charities in Riverview. Those are the three that are planned. So if you wanna do any deeper dive, those are the three we're looking at. Alright, any other questions?
I don't have any, but thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Stella. Move on to our ten forty-five work session to discuss the UCC twenty-twenty-two legislative priorities? Do you have anything on that, Jay?
No, I saw it, I read it. Looks like a lot of similar ones in the past. And I'm trying to think if there were any new ones, but it jumped out at me. But yeah, they all look like good things from the county.
Okay.
Not sure if.
I missed part of the meeting. I missed part of the meeting, I know Liam was on it, but.
Ethan Gilmore raised his hand. Maybe he wants to comment. Eric, since you think the IT guy would be able to do that himself, right?
Oh, I can unmute, just waiting for permission.
Go ahead.
I, good morning. I just have a question on that legislative priorities. Is that static and fixed? Or is there the opportunity to add to it at this stage?
I don't know, Jay, do you know?
Well, in past, you know, what has happened before, Nathan, just, you know, so this is kind of, they wanna have each county, so to speak, approve or record. These are our priorities, and this is the document. So we've done this in each one of my, my years. Past that, you know, the legislature brings up new things that might not even be on this list. And our lobbyists for the UCC will have discussion and/or see if we wanna take an opinion, either, you know, for, against, or just neutral. And so that, that happens quite often. Very rarely does things fall on the list, fall off the list. My experience is we don't add new ones to the list unless the legislation, unless there's active legislation moving towards that.
I think this was just basically centered at unfunded and underfunded mandates, right?
Uh, there's a bunch of stuff in there that aren't just about, so maybe, I'm not sure how you summarize that, so.
Well, basically, anything we're required to pay for that the state is, the state requires us to do and we're paying and they're not.
That's one, definitely one area, but there's other pieces in there that are, that are, there's more than just unfunded mandates.
Well, I guess.
So I don't know, Nathan, what, do you wanna add something?
Well, I mean, there's a, there's a paragraph in there about broadband, and it's pretty nonspecific. Like, it doesn't actually say of anything of value specifically what we would like the state to do or not to do. It just basically says, state show not get in the way of local government broadband promotion. It doesn't, it doesn't really give them anything of substance. So if there was an opportunity to add a few bullets, like specifics, this would help, this would help, this will hurt, I would be happy to draft something and send it in, but I didn't wanna do too much on that if this ship has already sailed.
In past years, I don't think there's been a lot of edits and revisions to this document. That's my memory. There's work, obviously, before the document's done to say, hey, do you still want all these things in here? And is there anything new? And that probably has, that elapsed. This would be more of an editorial comment, so, you know, I voted against this funding for this group and this lobbying effort. So I wouldn't worry too much about the words in this document. In the past few years, they haven't meant the hill of beans, in my opinion, so. Now, if you can convince fifty-one legislators in the House and twenty-six in the Senate, now you've got my attention, but that's a little harder.
Okay, no, I get it. I just, it's pretty vague, so I was thinking we could add some editorial. But maybe next year, I'll get out ahead of it, or we'll see where it may become of it. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Nathan. Ed?
Yep, you're on mute, my friend.
You're muted, Ed.
This is Ed Raver, Supervisor Potoff. I'm masquerading as Eric Schmickel here on his Zoom feed in the car. I'm not sure if he's mad about that, or I should be mad about that, that I'm Eric. But the comment I wanted to make was, was that, just one second here. The UCC has identified two main priorities. Those are mental health and unfunded mandates. And as you can see, there's a number of elaborations on that where we're sort of making a case on that. And to the IT Director Nathan's comment, there's just a list of a lot of other issues, and we're not necessarily leaning on those, or those are not the highest priority issues. As the session evolves and bills are introduced, there, it is pretty common for the exact issues that have arisen to come back to the counties in the UCC for particular comments or for ways to look at how we would address that particular piece of legislation that's been proposed. So while I think the fact that there aren't a lot of bullet points on a number of these issues, that just demonstrates that those are not our, that the top issues we're advocating for. But we do have a lot of other issues. As the session goes along, there are opportunities for a lot more targeted stances and issues that we're trying to direct the legislation toward as those things come up. So I think that that's the way that they would describe that. And also that this is not just simply the Dubuque County. There are four other colleague metro counties in eastern Iowa. So having them all agree about those, they're all in different situations. But, so it's a bit of a reaction to what legislation is proposed. So I don't know if that's helpful to you supervisors or to Nathan, but that's the way the last couple of years that this has evolved. Those two top priorities, mental health and unfunded mandates, are the things that we have a lot of additional information in this document about.
Okay, if I may just throw this for the board to know, so my interest in it is, A, it's pretty vague, but B, if the infrastructure bill does pass, we're all assuming it will, but once it, nothing matters until it passes. Once it's passed, there is buckets of money that the counties can apply for directly for broadband. And those, I have identified those. Of course, we have to wait for the Treasury guidance on the rules. But the ninety-five percent of it, though, I mean, maybe ninety-eight percent of it, the broadband money is assigned directly to the states, which is unfortunate in our circumstance because we've gone down that road. I've gone down that road. People with far more experience than I have gone down that road. And the state does not recognize Dubuque County as needing any sort of direct broadband investment dollars. So as this evolves, whatever arrows we can fire towards the state to encourage them to take some of that money, either work with us directly, I would even say work over us if it means we get investments. But the states are gonna get a lot of broadband money directly. And whatever steps we can do to insert ourselves to try to get some of that outside of the stuff that we're gonna apply for directly. So just throwing it out there, that's where my interest was piqued on this. So hopefully, we can get out ahead of it.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't have any other questions, I think what the UCC, Urban Counties Coalition, the lobbyists in the other counties are gonna look for, the next time we meet, that supervisors have looked at this. And in general, we have a concurrence on most likely those two top priorities as the ones that we're going to lead off with the legislature. And back to Nathan, I think that, I am aware of the situation that you just described. I'm not sure that it's one that is shared by the other four counties. That may be more of a, just a Dubuque County issue in this particular instance. But we'll raise that with them.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Nathan? Any further on that?
I don't think so, I'm not sure. Scheduled for action, or?
It is not, it is not necessarily an action item. It is merely, just that you've discussed it and we're not asking you to vote on that at this time.
Sweet.
But that, you've had, you've expressed no, there's some general concurrence about this. So not particularly a vote, but we're just hearing, listening back what you've said, and we'll report that back to your colleagues at the next UCC meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Moving on, Boards and Commissions update.
If anything enlightening that I need to share or thinking through?
Just for informational purposes, they have the ribbon cutting at the gas, at the landfill gas plant on Thursday, ten to noon. And they have the open house at Houlihan's for the patio, the new patio dining area. That is on Tuesday at.
Wife went there yesterday, she said it was great, or Saturday. Said it was wonderful, the Houlihan's.
You were there?
No, my wife did.
Oh.
She went there, said it was great.
They have kind of the grand opening, I guess, or whatever, for Tuesday at four thirty. And that is really all. And that is really all I have.
All I got? I'm good, we, we good? Motion to adjourn.
I will second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.